Evening, everyone. Welcome to our town council meeting.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 7. I was gonna answer myself usually. Yeah. Can we try this again? All right.
One more time.
All right, I'm gonna say, again, welcome, everybody. Today's, welcome to our town council meeting. Today's Tuesday, January 7, 2025. Mr. Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Lord?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Here.
Mayor Mayor Butt?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you could all please join me and rise for the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, um, so, Marissa, if you could start off, if you could read the instructions for people to call in for the directions, please.
Please be advised that when joining the meeting, you are automatically muted. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The public was able to make public comments prior to the meeting either by leaving a voicemail message or sending an email to the town clerk. We did receive one email earlier with some questions, which I did forward to the town council and the town manager.
All right, thank you very much, and I appreciate that, and I will address those to best of our ability, so I thank that. And again, to the republic, it's really helpful when they do submit those comments, questions ahead of time, gives us time to prepare, so I do appreciate that. So with that, I am now going to open up the floor for public comments. The floor is now open for public comments. Anybody who can speak? Is there anybody in the queue?
No one in the queue.
All right. Out of order, okay. Takes us to our town council announcements and board and committee reports. Are there any additions, deletions, board committee reports anybody likes to report on? Yes, there are none. Okay, like I said, I will be addressing some of the comments and questions during the scope of this meeting. But I'm gonna start it off with our town manager report, so Ralph, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, members of council. As tonight is a special call meeting, we normally have on a standing item on the agendas and update our design services from our 16 acres from Emma Jones. But I would request that if we could just defer her presentation to when we get to item 11A resolution, because that way we could prepare that presentation that's gonna be directly associated with the 16 acre legacy park complex.
All right, I'll move that, that's fine. We can move our presentation to that item, so.
Okay.
You have the rest of your report?
With that, no, no other reports, mayor.
All right, so our town attorney report. Roger, anything, sir?
Good evening, mayor. No report today.
All right, thank you so much. That's sort to our town clerk. Town clerk, any comment?
No report this evening.
Okay. Though it come very quickly, normally our agenda, we have a lot of other things in between the beginning of the meeting where public comments are open and our comments. Because the agenda doesn't have a lot of stuff on it except for one item. I do have to open it up again for public comments right now, even though it's been a full almost a minute since our last public comment meeting. There's no one here. Anybody in the queue?
No one in the queue this time.
Public comments is now closed. That takes us to item 11A, so if you could read the item, please, Mr. Clerk.
A resolution of the mayor and the town council of the town of Kessler Bay, Florida, revising the adopted final master plan design for the town's 16 acre legacy park and municipal complex project and providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you very much. Ralph, sir?
Thank you, mayor, members of council. As you're aware, we've embarked in this journey of designing the, our legacy park project. During our last council meeting on December the 4th, we, we reached a critical hurdle in which was the soil remediation plan that, that we approved through Kaufman Lynn through our, our contractor in the amount of 12.8 million dollars. Since that time, now we know that we've reached that critical path. Now we know the design elements that we have working behind the scenes all these months with our design team, our environmental team hosting weekly meetings. We have Emma Jones here tonight as well. So we would like to make a presentation to tell you where we're at right now, so that we have that critical decision-making path. And that's why, mayor, members of council, purposely this agenda didn't have anything else on it except this. That's how important this, this juncture is right now for us in the, in the history of this project. So with that, if, mayor, if I may, I could have, you know, Ms. Emma Jones make the presentation?
Yes, you may.
Emma?
Good evening, everybody. Emma Jones with Stan Tech Owners Rep for the town of Kessler Bay. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you had a safe and enjoyable holiday season. I am gonna go ahead and share my screen. All right. So we wanted to start off with a quick recap of where we, where we've been and where we are in the project timeline. I'm gonna run through this pretty quickly because it's gonna be, you know, not new knowledge to, to most everyone. We obviously embarked on the design assist process once we brought Kaufman Lynn on board, who are our contractor. We completed the schematic design phase documents were completed on in March of 24, March of last year, and then we had Kaufman Lynn provide us with a cost estimate, and they provided that in June of 24. Now, between March and June, there were, you know, discussions, cost analyses, scope changes, just to, you know, obviously, we were looking at the budgets, et cetera. So there wasn't just a void of time between those two. And then, at that point, the design development began in parallel with us going through that cost breakdown analysis and revision, as well as material and design revisions. We were obviously very concerned about the budget at that point, still are, but that was our, our primary focus. So the design development phase, Salz-Michelson provided us with a set of design development documents in July of 24. We then received a pricing update based on these design development documents from Kaufman Lynn in October of 24, and then proceeded to, again, do a cost breakdown analysis and revision, and then material and design revisions based on the information that we had received. And in addition, we did some scope revisions, and you're gonna start to see that this evening as we go further on in the presentation. The construction, construction document phase, which would be the next step in the process, that's currently on pause, and we've paused that simply because right now we are at a pivotal point where we need to make decisions regarding the scope, the direction, and we do not want to release the, the design team to take this next step until we know exactly where the council and the town would like to, to head with this. So again, the construction documents are TBD, cost, again, final cost, and then the final GMP. So along this journey, we have looked for additional funding sources. We submitted an EPA grant on November 14th, and we received comments back on the 28th of December, and we have a meeting with a representative from the EPA tomorrow. Again, additional, you know, monies towards this project, the voluntary cleanup tax credits have been applied for in 2022, 23, 24, and the ones for 2025 are in process. Our team meetings, we have weekly team meetings as well as a litany of other meetings in between to review design and cost analyses. Here's a slew of dates. We do design workshops, as I said, weekly environmental meetings, weekly OAC, which are owner, architect, contractor meetings, and that just keeps the team engaged and up to date on changes as they come through. In addition, we've had a couple of town council workshops, and obviously, we provide meetings during the town council, updates during the town council meetings. So this is the master plan concept that was adopted via Resolution 23-68 in June, and this has, this is the, the image that shows all the bells and whistles, so this was the initial concept design. Again, four acres of buildings, 12 acres of park. As we have obviously gone through this, we have started to really tighten down on costs and what we can afford and the design of the different buildings. Part of that you heard in December when we were discussing the soil remediation and the, those different approaches, and that has directly affected how we are approaching the new, sort of the revised design. Whereas before, our community center pool and pool building was raised so that it was technically up on a second level, and we had, the idea was to store and encapsulate the contaminated soils beneath that. However, upon a further geotechnical review, we discovered that the soils were not suitable for, and did not have the bearing capacity needed for the building, so we had to sort of diverge from that, that idea. So new pricing for the community center as a one-level structure. The cost per square foot, 822 approximately, and then 10 million for the community center building. The pool building, which also includes the pool and the deck, is approximately 4.3. So the total for the community center pool and pool building is 14.3. Next, we have the town council chambers. We looked at a couple of options here. The two options were to do a two-story version where we have expansion on the second floor, and that came out to approximate total of 13.8 million. And then another option is making it three stories, so we shell the third floor or use the third floor for other space, and that will obviously, again, leaning towards expansion in the future, and that is 18.2. This slide walks you through the difference in the two plans of the, the two options for the town council. So as I said, the two-story versus the three-story, we've got, the first floor would remain the same in both options and have a square footage of just under 11,000. And then second floor, again, would be similar, but then the third floor in the second option would be an additional 7,500 square feet. So then we have the police department. So option A on the police department is that we would build it out in what is considered its current state. So currently, the police department is contracted out, so they do not have all the requirements of a sole source in-house police department, because there are other facilities and the other amenities close by. So option A is to build out, or fit out, sorry, 6,800 square feet, but then shell out the additional 6,000 for future expansion. Just for everyone's reference, currently, the police department occupies approximately 6,100 square feet within the current town hall building. Option B is that we build out the entire, or fit out the entire building, and that would be an entire in-house future state police force, and that would include things like a Sally Port, holding cells, and, and other items that sort of are that next step of an entirely self-contained police department. The parking garage, option A is obviously the parking garage, three stories, 300 spaces, $7 million, and then option B would be to have surface parking, and that would be approximately half a million dollars. The park and open space, we have, we removed the lake from the design, and the lake was approximately 1.5 acres, and we removed it because it was, we could not figure out a safe way to basically build the lake because of the arsenic in the groundwater. So we removed that from the plan, which creates the safer option. So on the, the image that you're seeing right now, the park open space would be 12 acres, approximately 4.8 million dollars for that space, and that would include walking paths and golf, golf cart parking. There's also a stage slash event pavilion around 700,000, and then restrooms would be part of this design, so that they would be separate restrooms that would be just for use from the park, and you would not have to go into the community center to use those. So the summary of Phase 2, this is sort of a, an à la carte menu of all of the options. I'm just gonna click through these, and you can see community center, pool building, town hall, the two options at the town hall, police department, option one and option two, parking garage, option one and option two, the open space again. And then we also, for the entire site, we have site infrastructure, which are the utilities, so it's all that sort of uninteresting things, I would say, that happened beneath the soil before the buildings go up, that no one gets to see, and everyone wonders where that cost went, so it's sort of the non, the non-sexy things is what we call it in building, and then obviously, the site concrete and paving. So those are additional costs. I will turn over to the town manager.
Okay, thank you, Emma. Just to provide a recap to the council, one of the items, as we mentioned, was, you know, we do, we do have a $37 million bond that was approved back in March 2022 with the mail-in election. We have the results, or nearly 66% approval rating. And then, at the same time, if Emma, if you could go ahead and start clicking for me there? Okay, so we have, so far, we have, you know, Resolution 2398, Salt-Michelson for Design Services. That is not only just for design service, that encompasses all the civil engineering for the project. It was $3.7 million. We also have Resolution 2367, Stan Tech Owners Rep Services for $244,000. Next, we have Resolution 2488, Kim Lee Horn, Environment Monitoring. The reason why you see this item highlighted, because just in conversations with, with our, our Brownfield attorney, we feel that this $284,000 can be completely removed from the geo-bond and placed under our Brownfields program, making us eligible for voluntary cleanup tax credits. Next, we have Resolution Number 2489, Kaufman Lynn. We've mentioned before, we call it GMP1, we call it the soil remediation. Here, you'll see here, $6.3 million, some change with an asterisk, because the GMP for the soil removal was 12.8 million dollars. It was approved during our council meeting on December the 8th. We have obligated $6.5 million from our ARPA funds, and the remainder, based on that resolution, was going to be coming out of the 6.3 million from the bond. So just doing the quick math, we have $37 million original. We have obligated above 10.62. And then right now, just using the, the chart you have in front of you, that we will have $26 million, 26.4 million, oh, sorry, go back. Emma, sorry, 26.4 million dollars there for that. Now, some of the items that we have been discussing internally is looking at the, the soil remediation. Some of the things that we talked, I, I basically say, you know, during my briefings, is really, we have, you know, three options, right? First option, we could just do the soil remediation for the 6.5 million dollars on eight of the 16 acres. Two, continue the path of taking out of the general obligation bond, which leaves us with $26 million. Or possibly, three, is, you know, taking the 6.3 million dollars from our fund balance reserves that we're gonna talk about here shortly. So I just wanna show this you graphically. Emma, go to the next screen. Okay, and just go ahead and click. Okay, so we got the park open space. Again, post, this is what we talked about, postpone the development of eight acres, and just basically, literally just fencing it off. What are those savings? Well, first, we have the, the eight-acre development, 2.4 million, the earthwork infrastructure, 2 million, concrete paving, 1.2 million, stage event pavilion, 700,000, and park rest of 800,000. That's about approximately $7 million there, $7.1 million. But I wanted to stay on this graphic here for a second, you know, Emma, because I think that, that part of the, part of the, the analysis that we've been doing internally, you know, mayor, is we've actually, and council, we've met with our financial advisor, you know, regarding the possible use of the 6.3 million dollars from our fund balance, we call our savings account. As you recall, from our last audit, we have over $26 million in our, in our savings account. We run through the analysis, looking at the options for the council to consider, is if we take 6.3 million dollars from our fund balance, it will not have a negative impact on our bond rating according to our financial advisor, and we do have Mr. Mark Gooding on, online here tonight, mayor, prepared with a little short presentation if necessary, but again, you know, I wanna thank, you know, Lourdes Albertine and Mark Gooding, because we actually talked to Mark, who's actually at the desk at Wall Street for the firm. And, and it won't have a negative impact. Again, our, our, what we're trying to do is provide you options, right? You know, option one, fence off that, that portion of it that you have on the, on the graph. Option two, take the 6.3 from the general obligation bond, that leaves us 26 mil. Or option three, take it from our savings account, that'll, that'll bring down our savings account 6.3 million dollars. It will not have a negative impact on our It will not have a negative impact on our bond rating, but at the same time, it will allow us to have thirty-two million dollars able to develop the, the legacy part. Okay, so with that, go ahead, Emma, please. Emma, we can't hear you, I don't think.
You still there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, I'm gonna take off from here.
Okay. All right, so the other items that, for sort of the other options that we have would be deferring items to a phase three. So the police department, one example is, as I said, we could only build out what is the considered current state of the existing police department. And that would be to fit out, so we would build the entire shell of the, the twelve thousand eight hundred square feet. But we would only fit out sixty-eight hundred square feet of that, and we would shell six thousand for the future. So that would bring, the, the cost would be approximately five point nine. So deferred costs would be three million. The other option is, we don't build out any of the building, and the deferred cost to phase three would be eight point nine. And option three would be that the police department stays in its current location, and we would just pay, they would pay rent, or we would pay rent, and it would be approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand a year. So these are the, the, this is the summary of what could be deferred to phase three. There would, we could also defer the parking garage. And so what we would do instead of the parking garage, we would do surface parking. So the deferred cost there would be seven million, which is the cost of building out the parking garage. We would also, we could also defer the development of eight acres. So we would fence it off and say, this is unusable space, and the public would not get to interact with this space. And the deferred cost for that would be seven point one million. So if we deferred all three of those items to phase three, the total would be twenty-three million of deferred costs. So we have six options to discuss for cost savings. Or, you know, deferrals, obviously options, sort of that à la carte menu that I spoke of. And Ralph, would you like to walk through the six options, or would you like me to?
You, you go ahead and then I'll add.
Okay, all right. So option one, obviously, we would build the community center, the pool and the pool building. So the costs, as you've heard before, ten million approximately for the community center, four point three million for the pool building, pool deck and, and associated costs. Town hall, we would build a two-story town hall, which would be thirteen point eight million. We would build the police department, but we would only do that option where we built the entire shell, and then we fit out half of it, or sixty-eight hundred square feet. We would build the parking garage, and the entire open space would be developed. So that would include all the amenities, walking paths, et cetera, golf cart parking, stage event pavilion and the restrooms, the site infrastructure for the entire sixteen acres, site concrete and paving for the entire sixteen acres. So the total cost of that comes to fifty-seven point five million. Option two, again, the community center pool and pool building, those remain unchanged. Town hall at two stories, police department would be, again, that we would build out the entire shell, only fit out half of the space. The parking goes to surface parking, so it's a half a million dollars for that cost, so the parking garage goes away. The park open space, we develop the entire sixteen acres, so the whole twelve acres of the park. Infrastructure stays the same, concrete and paving for the entire sixteen acre stays the same, and that cost is fifty-one million. Option three, again, community center pool, pool building, those all remain unchanged. Town hall goes to three stories. The police department, building is now not built, and the police department is housed on the third floor of the town hall. The parking is surface parking. And the entire twelve-acre park is developed with the event pavilion, park restrooms. So all of the, the infrastructure for the sixteen acres is developed, as well as the, the concrete and paving. And that is forty-nine point five million. Option four, again, community center pool, pool building, town hall drops to two stories. The police department does not, the new police building does not get built. They do not get housed in the town hall. They stay where they currently are. The parking goes to surface parking. The entire twelve acres is developed with the sixteen acres of infrastructure, and that puts us at forty-five point one. Option five, again, community center pool, that all stays the same, town hall goes to three stories. Police department moves to the three-story town hall space. Parking is surface parking. The park open space, we only develop eight of the sixteen acres. So we are, the, the other acreage is twelve acres of grass, so just usable space. There are no walking paths, nothing of that sort, so it is just a large, open grass space, but it is all usable. And that is at forty-two point four. And then option six, again, community center pool building, all of that gets built out, town hall goes to two stories, police department stays in its current location, parking is surface parking. The park, we only develop eight of the sixteen acres. The twelve acres are, you know, it's all usable grass space, but there are no walking paths, nothing fancy, no event pavilions, no restrooms, et cetera. And that is thirty-seven point seven million. And I'm sure there are questions.
So Mayor members of council, what we try to do is provide as many options as available. I mean, there was six, there was actually a couple more, but we just wanted to make sure that we narrow the scope as much as we can. I mean, we're from the, the high range of over, you know, fifty million dollars to the, the last one, which is thirty-seven seven. So there's some, again, just, we want to use this forum to have that open conversation and dialogue with council, and the community showing you the numbers. I think we're very comfortable with the estimates that we have received. Is it down to the penny? No. But I think that it's, it's there that you're not going to see if we choose option, you know, six, it's going to be a, an increase of X millions of dollars there. So I think something that we want to provide, we have the, the team here available. We have Charles Mickelson there from Salt Mickelson there. Obviously, we have Emma, and then we have our financial advisor on the line as well. So we're certainly available for questions and, and discussion.
All right, Ralph, thank you very much. And, and before we go forward, I just want to kind of do a recap to, you know, talk about how we got here. It's real simple, hindsight to look back and talk about what we should have done. But when you go back to two thousand and five, and, and the directive from the residents was really clear, said there was a concern. They said, listen, we need to stop growing so fast, we need to find vacant parcels, having negative effects on our quality of life by overbuilding, having negative effects of traffic, the whole nine yards. And, and back in twenty sixteen, the town council asked the manager to identify and research for vacant parcels, and they identified over two hundred and fifty of them. And tried to settle on one or a couple of them, which we could hold on to, reserve for green space, like we've often said. You know, they're not making any more green space, and if it goes away, it's gone away forever. So you have to take the opportunity to, to gather what is can. At this point, there's probably not much green space left in all of Cutler Bay. But in twenty twenty, we went forward, and we asked the community to, to weigh in on it. And they were in agreement that we wanted to go ahead and preserve the sixteen acres for, for green space. There are some good questions as we're getting into this arsenic issue, which is really creating a little bit of a conundrum for us. Because did we know there was arsenic? Yeah, we did some early testing, and we were aware there was arsenic there. We went forward down the brownfield path, which would go ahead and allow us to take credit of tax credits, which we could sell to other municipalities, businesses, to get ninety cents on the dollar to help remediate that. Publix joined us on that. I think Publix spent five million dollars cleaning up their arsenic issues there as well. But then, when we went forward with the Department of Environmental Regulation Management, they came back and said, hey, you got to do a lot more testing than what you did. Your testing is great, but it's not enough. And that's really when we found out how bad it was there. Not only did we find out it was bad there, but they also asked us to do testing in other sites, which was the Blue Heron Park. And we found arsenic there, and all of a sudden, you know, boom, we've got fences around our parks that we can't use because Department of Environmental Regulation says it, it's unsafe. We took immediate action, developing a plan to clean up the soil over there. And right now, that's with Derm, looking at our plans. We don't know what the cost is yet, because you don't know what the cost is until the, the department approves your plan. And that's very similar to what happened here. We didn't know what the cost was going to be. You know, our hope was that we're going to be able to encapsulate soil, build on top of it, even build a lake and dig down. But because of the extent of that, it, it's just, it's not possible. This land was used from nineteen thirty-eight going forward as farmland. So of course, there's pesticides and other things that are, that went in there. And that really, you know, the, the effect on that, it obviously is not good. So now we're in a position where we have sixteen acres of, of green space, and that's the good news. It is still green space, and when you look at the long-term effects on this, on town, not only for this generation, but for future generations, it's going to be green forever. But there's obviously, it's got to be cleaned up eventually, if it wants to be used for green space. Same thing with Blue Heron Park. It's got to be cleaned up if we ever want to use it as green space again. So it's, we know that we have to do it. You, you don't just want to put a fence around it forever and not let the public use it. It just doesn't make any space, especially when green space is such a commodity right now. So now we have to go forward, and, and we have to scrape, I guess, roughly two, two point seven to three feet of that soil and cart it off and bring soil back. We have to go up, you know, I guess, bring back another four feet to bring it up to above grade, so it doesn't flood. And we're going to have to do the same thing in Blue and Heron Park. And, and to me, the, the arson issue is, it's some, it's, it's sort of like our, our, our love canal. It's a something that we have to deal with, which really isn't related so much to park development, but just to keeping our environment safe for our community. And, you know, that, that's the bad news, we got to do it. Also, the bad news that it is expensive to do it. There are some silver linings in this cloud. We do have six and a half million dollars of ARPA money, which we can commit to cleaning this up, which is half of the cost of totally cleaning up this. We can also go forward and look to recoup some of the monies we're spending from both federal and state levels, and looking for some grants to offset the, the, the cost of cleanup. The federal government and the state government smiles a lot more on communities, which are doing things to protect the environment and help the environment. And we're more likely to get those type of grants to help offset this case, these, these costs eventually. And so, you know, again, we have ARPA money, which is going to pay for half of this cleanup. And then we have the choice of what do we do with the rest of the half? Do we do nothing and just put a fence around it? Or do we use the bond money, which I don't think was ever intended for environmental cleanup? This is meant to create a beautiful public space for us. And the third option is to take it out of our general funds. Now, the third option, I think, is, is viable for one reason. We've always been very, very good with our money in Cutler Bay. As I've said many times, at one point, we were rated the most efficient city in all of, a, a state of Florida for cities our size. And we've been blessed that over the last couple of years, even though our tax mileage is among the lowest in Dade County, I think we're the seventh lowest out of the thirty-two or three cities in Dade County. But because of the favorable impacts that our community has been experiencing, people are moving to Cutler Bay. Our property values are increasing. They appreciate our community. They appreciate the things that we're doing in our community. So we've been generally bringing in about three million dollars more and adding to our reserves every year. Now, our reserves are pretty healthy right now, which is really good. For the last two years, we brought in three million dollars above what we thought we would. And God willing, we'll do that again this year. I would think, you know, you have reserves for rainy days like this. When you buy a home, you always want to keep money on your, on the side just because of unforeseen circumstances. So if your plumbing goes bad, or your electrical goes bad, or, or your roof wasn't, wasn't need to, you, you need to go ahead. It's an unforeseen circumstance. That doesn't mean you don't go forward and do it. You have to take care of it. But what is the effect if we were to do that on us? Again, if the six and a half million dollar of ARPA money is there, and if we take it out of our reserves, that doesn't, we don't have to, you know, our mileage rate will be able to stay the same. Our financial plan that we've been having will stay the same. Ralph has talked to the, our financial advisors, and they said that we're in such a healthy state right now that this would not affect our bond rating. So we wouldn't be paying more for our bond. So, you know, those, those are the options really basically to this. When we're talking about the options for our site plan here, there's obviously, you know, I want to thank Emma Jones, and, and that's why we got the design assist, to keep the cost limited. You know, there's some people concerned about the cost of, like, what, are you really spending four million dollars on architecture? Well, no, it's really one point five. But the rest of the stuff is for, you know, of, you know, imaging resources, lead certification corporations, a bunch of other things which go into building a project this size. So Emma, Emma Jones and her group has been really helping us make sure that we're getting the best value for our money. So Ralph, that was a great idea to go forward, to have that, to check our costs as we're going forward. You know, none of us have ever built a park this size before. It's really, you know, we're, we're going to make some mistakes, that's for sure. But quite honestly, I think by having actually experts walk us through this, this helped us a lot. So we now know that the, you know, originally, we thought that thirty-seven million dollars would be enough to build a, a nice facility. But over the last four years, costs keep going up and up and up. We've, the inflation that we've seen over the last four years is pretty, pretty, pretty significant, especially for the cost of materials, construction materials, which has affected this greatly. But Emma's outlined six options for us. And some of them, I think, are very, very good options of deferring some of these things, and where we can address in, in later years to see, you know, if our prosperity continues in Cutler Bay, and we can afford to do all these things, then great. But right now, we, we know that we have only thirty-seven million dollars to build something that is going to be usable for the public and, and make our, something nice. We've already spent some of that money, so that is reduced. So we have to decide what is our best option right now. One of the things I think is a no-brainer is the parking garage. That's a three-story facility. It'd be a, that's, that's definitely a nice to have, but not a need to have. That's something that can come later. That's a no-brainer. Though I'd like the police department to be with us right there. That's something that can come later as well. There, you know, again, there is an ongoing cost to that. But still, it's not such a, a big piece. It's really, how do we provide to the public the things that they really want and need? And we wanted something, a community, a community center, someplace where they can gather. And, and that's what we can still provide by removing some of these things. Out of all the options that I think Emma presented to me, and I'm going to open this up for discussion, but I just want to kind of throw that out there, to me is looking at option five. Option five, a rough price, I give forty-two million. And again, we would need to look at the six million dollars from ARPA, six and a half million dollars from ARPA. And also, I'd propose that we use our general fund for the rest of the arsenic cleanup. And that item be considered something that we look at as for environmental cleanup. And that would allow us to go forward with much of the rest of the project and providing, number one, that green space that, that everybody was talking about. Wide-open green space for people to gather. Wide open green space for people to gather with their families. A community pool with a community center where people could go and exercise. And right there with it, our town hall for our town meetings, right in the heart of the community, making everybody for easy, everybody to access. So that, that was just my, my two cents on that. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up for discussion for the rest of the council. BJ Duncan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Emma, for the wonderful and informative presentation. I guess to start, I'll say that I do echo your sentiments as it pertains to our options regarding the soil remediation. I, not doing anything or completely fencing off eight acres and not allowing that to be touched and not remediating that, in my opinion, is not an option. Ultimately, when we proposed the geo bond referendum to our residents, it was to develop the entire sixteen acres, even if that ends up just being open green space. It's not apartments, it's not condos, it's not being developed. But if we were to wall it off, eight acres unusable, untouched, first, you're going to have all of our residents thinking that we don't know what we're doing. And that we're not responsible when we tell them we're going to do one thing and we can't even do that. Secondly, if you don't remediate the entire property, you have a massive amount of properties and houses that abut this property that are going to wonder, well, if you don't touch the arsenic on these eight acres, what is the effect on my property? So I think if, if we require our residents to do cleanups and things of that nature on their own personal properties, if something was found, then we need to be good stewards of our property as well and take care of that. I will also agree that using money that we have in our general fund, that is a very healthy amount right now, twenty-six million, over twenty-six million, after we've been able to put over three million dollars in the past few years, and luckily, our town staff, our town manager, the amount of funding and additional resources that we're able to bring in has allowed us to do that. And there's no indication that we would not be able to continue to do so moving forward. You can't count on that, of course, but nonetheless, if you go from twenty-six to just under twenty, and it's not going to have a negative impact financially on our bond rating, that is what that money is there for. I do not believe we should be taking that six and a half, or whatever the additional funds are, out of the geo bond. The residents did not approve that money to go towards soil remediation. They went, they approved that money specifically for Town Hall Community Center Park. So I think whatever the geo bond money that is available for spending needs to be allocated on those purposes. If we're already utilizing ARPA funding, then I think we have a responsibility. And if we have the means and it's not going to have a negative impact on us moving forward to utilize some of that rainy day balance that we have moving forward. Beyond that, just a few questions for clarification purposes. In the presentation, it showed that the community center, the pool and the buildings was roughly fourteen point three million dollars. The pool itself and all that was four point three. Were we using ARPA fund? Did that include any ARPA funding that goes towards the pool that we were discussing? Or is that part of that fourteen point three, or do we have to subtract any ARPA funding from that number?
Councilman, that's a good question. The six point five million dollars that we obligated was directly for soil remediation. Two things. One, we had to obligated before December thirty-first. And the design for the pool, the construction plans, we would literally have to have a work order already, ready for a contractor to meet the obligation rules for ARPA. So at that point, we did not want to lose the six point five million dollars from ARPA. So we used it for soil remediation, which is an eligible expense.
Okay, perfect. Secondly, so the geo bond that was authorized was thirty-seven million. Does the, the numbers, the spending balance that we have available to us now, does that include any potential interest that has accrued since it was obligated, so to speak, or since we, since it was passed, since we went through the bond process? Ultimately, what I'm trying to get at is what, as of today, minus any expenses we've already obligated towards it, what is our spendable balance so that we can make a best, our best judgment moving forward as to what of these six options we should use?
So we haven't drawn down any of the bindings yet. We haven't drawn it down. So right now, what you see in that one chart, I don't know if Marcy could bring that up, the one chart there that we, that we show the obligation, is something that we have, are using our general fund right now, kind of like, lack of a better word, to float it until we issue and reimburse ourselves the bond. So there has not been any drawdown from, from the bond. I think, yes, there you go, Marcy. So right now, what we've obligated from what we said obligation-wise is a total of ten million dollars. The highlighted there, that six point three is that, that's that pivotal point, right? Make the decision not from the bond, from savings, or not do it at all. But I could tell you, members of council, in talking to our financial advisors, when we do draw down the thirty-seven million, we'll get some of that prepaid interest in also. So, so really, it really, it's possible an extra two million. It might be thirty-nine by the time we draw down. Again, I'm not committing that because in a project this size, you want to have that type of wiggle room, you know, for any type of allowances there. But, but we do know that once we draw that down, we want to make sure that, to be prudent, we do one drawdown.
Yeah.
One drawdown versus the multiple drawdowns, a series of bonds. So I hope that answers. But yes, there is a little bit of silver lining there that when we do draw it down, because we'll get the prepaid interest there, it will be drawing down thirty-nine.
Okay. And then one last question, I guess. In the options, in the calculations for options one through six, ranging from fifty-seven all the way down to thirty-seven, does, do those include this, the ten point five number? Or is the ten point five minus the six point, we go, whatever we end up doing today, out of that original twelve point eight, you know, so on and so forth, are, is that included in that thirty-seven to fifty-seven number, or is that on top of? So it's really sixty-seven to forty-seven?
I'll let, I'll let Emma answer. I know the answer, but I want to go ahead and have her answer on the record, she made that presentation. So Emma, if you can. Is she on mute or?
Emma, we can't hear you if you're speaking, by the way.
All right, members of council, as she's getting on, the answer is no. The GMP one is not part of those estimates. What Emma showed you in those options is the actual buildable items. We're, that is assuming that we do the remediation. So it's not, it's not, it's not included. How about that?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, I was on mute. Yeah, no, that GMP one is a separate entity.
Okay. Yeah, probably. Ralph explained it. Thank you so much. And then I would just say, my last comment that I would have then, based on all of the options, it appears that the only one we'd be able to afford is option six. But I would say the, the most bang for your buck, you get what we promised the residents without overdoing it would be either option four or option five. And the difference between that is roughly a little bit under three million dollars, but that's for the rest of us to discuss. Thank you all.
And Mayor, before, before, I just want to clarify something. I know that you mentioned, but I think I want to make sure it's clear that we have actually have applied for a four point nine million dollar EPA grant. It's four point nine million dollars. Now, again, we applied for it. I'm not saying that we're going to get it, but I think we have a really strong application because we are converting a arsenic soil and water-based contamination area for civic use. So we do get points there. We are meeting with the folks from EPA, you know, tomorrow to discuss our application. We feel that we have a strong case for it. But again, it's a four point nine million dollar grant application there.
And if I may, just really quickly, is there a match with that grant at all or no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We'd like to go next, Vice Mayor. Sure. Emma. Option five, excuse me, option five, we are remediating all twelve acres of the park. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In option five, does that include the pavilion and the restrooms? The walking path, the golf cart parking?
No, it does not.
So in option five, it's just twelve acres of flat land?
Open green space.
In option four? Yeah. You know, to be honest, this is a lot to go over and just really a lot to consider. It's not something that I feel comfortable that I can make a decision on tonight. I mean, I wasn't prepared for six options with, with all of this à la carte stuff. I mean, I would, you know, I have, I have a lot of questions, but a lot of the questions need research and additional information. I mean, I'll just say that. I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight and would prefer to defer.
Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few comments. Clearly, the arsenic level is not optimal. We did know, like the mayor said, that there would be some arsenic there. But I strongly feel that we should remediate that soil in total while we're doing it. There are concerns for the neighbors that live around the park. Whether or not we, I don't like the idea of putting a fence around half of it and not using that. We promised green space. We promised a community center and a pool, and I like the idea of us going forward with that. I'm disappointed that we can't have the lake, but I'm also happy that we're able to regain almost one and a half acres of usable green space. So I think that that's very important. I want to echo what the Vice Mayor just said. These presentations are not provided to us before we, we come up on this dais. And there is a ton of information that you guys were just fed, that we are fed. It is a lot. I mean, I'm up here taking notes faster than, than I do when I'm in trial. It's, it's a lot of information. So I just wanted to make sure our residents know that, know that, you know, we're asked to make some very big decisions sometimes on the cuff. A lot of this is touched on or maybe discussed slightly, but we don't see these presentations. I love that we have the EPA grant meeting already scheduled, four point nine million dollars. Will do a lot to help us. I also wanted to point out that our town manager and staff worked very quickly with our financial advisors to provide us six options. That's, that's a lot. That's a lot of options with a lot of à la carte moving parts. But I thank you for your quick work, Town Manager. I thank your staff. Again, not optimal that we can't do this whole project all at once like we wanted. But, you know, and I've said this to the Town Manager, I recently did home improvements. I pulled a loan to get some stuff done. I wanted to do it all at once. It ended up being done in three phases. That stuff happens. That's reality. I also, I want to thank the mayor for the video that he did. It is not an easy video to produce and provide this kind of bad information, bad news to the town. It's not easy to be the bearer of this news. But, you know, I used to follow the town before I got elected. I used to watch a lot of council meetings. My son was on the youth council. I was involved that way. And I always heard how transparent we were and how much information we provide the town. And I was pleasantly surprised when I was elected that it, that is actually the truth. So the mayor's video, as hard as it was for him to produce and pump out, was necessary for us to remain transparent. And also, our transparency was so much so that we, we, we re-submitted that video on social media with an invitation to people to come out to this meeting tonight. And it's like, we're talking about some bad news here, but we want you guys to come and be part of the discussion. I see familiar faces. I'm glad you guys are here. I do like, I, I do like that the idea of us taking the six point three from our reserves. We've worked really hard since I've been elected. At, we've worked very hard on our financials. We have that money there. The talent, the taxpayers have already paid that money, so to speak. We've already earned that money. The geo bond was not designed for environmental cleanup, so I feel strongly that we don't draw from the geo bond for any of the environmental cleanup. And, you know, finally, I like option five and six, but again, there's just so many moving parts. It's hard to, to really nail that down right now. Sorry, I was verbose, but I really felt like that's, that needed to be pointed out.
Thank you, Councilman Lord. I do, you know, Councilman Lord and Vice Mayor, talk about the moving parts and wanting a little more information. You know, we may be okay with that. I'll, I'll give you just a moment to speak in just one second. But also, I'd like to try to work on some of the parts of this that we can tonight. So, but before I go there, Councilman Ramirez. Councilman Ramirez, did you?
Yeah, I'd prefer to hear it. I was going to plan on making a motion, but I'd prefer to hear you out first, if that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. So Vice Mayor Callan makes some really good points. So we're talking about a lot of changes, six different options. Quite honestly, very, very complicated, and we do want to be prudent, which means we don't have to rush. This is a revision of her master plan, where we're dialing things back a little bit. And quite honestly, we're, we need to come to terms on how much we need to dial it back. We want to try to deliver as much as possible. However, I think, in my mind, environmental cleanup for both Legacy Park and Blue Heron Park is something that we need to address. And I would prefer that we give the, our staff direction on that cleanup. We, nobody wants, the residents that not able to use Blue Heron Park have been voicing their concerns about that. We need to clean that up. We've already asked Derm for, presented a plan to them, which they need to approve. And once they approve, I'd like to move on then as soon as possible. And same thing with Legacy Park. We know that it needs to be cleaned up eventually. We have to do it. And the longer you wait to do it, the more expensive it's going to get to do it. Right now, we have committed a six and a half million dollars of the federal government's money to help clean up this area, which is great. We do have healthy reserves for these rainy days, for things like this, for environmental cleanup. I call this our love canal. Folks, we have to go ahead and invest in our town and get it cleaned up. So I would, you know, I, I'm okay with, if someone were to make a motion to defer the revision of the, of our master plan until we can get more information or discuss it further. I think that's great because I do want to be prudent on that. But I do want to give some consensus and agreement on how we clean that up and how do we pay for cleaning it up on that. So that was but my proposal. So. Vice Mayor Callan, you're recognized.
Yeah. I, I don't have, I don't have an issue if you want to take this in two parts, right? So if you want to separate out the, the construction, the buildings. So prior to this meeting, my concern was the consensus of the council, whether we would remediate half the property or the entire property, right? That was, that was the biggest sticking point. It appears that the consensus of the council from comments is that the way to go forward is to remediate all twelve, or all twelve acres of the property, or the sixteen acres where including the building sites. With that being said, then, then that cost becomes a, a solid cost, right? And then we work backwards from that point, which then we know what our budgets are. And then we can explore the other six options, knowing that at least we are spending money to remediate the, the twelve acres.
That makes sense. So I don't, Ralph, we don't need to do a resolution on this. I think you have direction from the council.
I, I think, Mayor, if it's the will of the council, we will draft up a resolution for our, again, our next coming meeting is January fifteenth, really a week away. January fifteenth. If that's the will of the council, we'll work with the town attorneys. That'll be an agenda item to put in that resolution, you know, for or drawdown of the fund balance and mid-year budget adjustment, you know, modification. And we'll work that with the, with the town attorney's office and put that before you for, for formal vote on the January fifteenth council meeting, which is, you know, Wednesday.
And just make sure, Blue Heron Park needs to be included in that. This is not just exclusive. This is environmental issues throughout our town.
Correct. And what we'll do, we'll put language there, and going back to what you said, Mayor, not knowing until we have the soil remediation plan approved by Derm, we'll put some language in there that, that'll provide us the ability to draw down front, really, in that case with Blue Heron is a different case, we'll front the money. On that case, with Blue Heron, it's a different case, we'll front the money from our fund balance and then reimburse once we go through the legal proceedings for all the liable parties on Blue Heron Park. But we'll provide that general direction with language there that the final number will come back to the town council. And I don't want to just say, hey, here's a blank check, right? We want to make sure because there's a range that we're looking to explore with Miami County DERM. But more importantly for the residents is we are going to be aggressively going back to the individuals that transferred that land and consultants.
I'd like to point that out too. When we acquired Blue Heron, we did go ahead and had samples done, they said it was all good. Then hindsight, we find out, oh, wait a minute, and other testing later on says it's not good. And we are pursuing legal action because we got that information. And so we're dealing with something that we would not have had to deal with. So I do appreciate that. You know, and just to kind of touch upon some of the other things, the other, there's a lot of ideas on what we can do with how to remediate this land. Other people are saying, well, can't you just bury it? Instead of digging it up, why do you have to dig it up and bury it? So many options that we've been discussed, where we just don't have any other option of, other than the DERM says, no, you got to get that dirt out of there. If you just encapsulate it, then, well, you can't plant any trees there because if the trees grow through it, then it's pierced. So that kind of stuff where you just can't do. So we're trying to come up with creative ideas and thank you to the members of the community who submitted ideas to me. Which, you never know, there may be a, you know, a gem in there where we could use. But so far, we haven't found anything yet. A lot of moving pieces. And, you know, and again, this is not a perfect world that any of us live in. None of us are experts in this, we're all working for the best of our community and trying to do what was best for the community going forward. When you said you don't, as far as remedying half of it, it's more cost effective to remediate all of it all at the same time. So I think we've got consensus there, which is good, you've got direction on there, we'll look for a resolution on that. As far as item eleven A, if we need to, again, it's not with the soil remediation because it doesn't mention that in there, it's just the resolution. Are we looking for a deferral on that item? And if so, I need a motion on that.
Motion.
We have a motion for Councilman Ramirez to defer item eleven A, looking for a second.
Hi, second.
Second, or Councilman Lord, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, this item is deferred.
Mr. Mayor, I have two, just quick points of clarification.
You recognize Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the town manager. In the twelve million dollars, I just want to make sure that this is clear, that is a contracted price, correct?
Correct. The twelve point eight million dollars that we have negotiated with Kaufman Land is a contracted price.
It is a contract. I just want to be clear that, you know, because there's been questions back and forth, oh, when the report comes back from DERM and blah, that report has already come back, they've already had a plan, and Kaufman and Lynn has priced that plan from DERM and EPA.
From DERM, correct.
Twelve point eight, okay.
Correct. Out of that twelve point eight, and we aggressively pursuing a four point nine million dollar EPA grant based on that information.
Correct. The second point of clarification is that we all know that grants are not guaranteed, right? So we would be approving a twelve point eight million dollar remediation. If that grant is awarded, can that grant be used to pay ourselves back if we front the twelve million dollars?
Yes, because the six point five of it is from ARPA, so that's technically a grant. The six point three would be, you know, our contributions towards the twelve point eight million dollars. And yes, we would, we will be able to reimburse ourselves.
That's exactly what I'm saying. So that we would, what we would be authorizing is a six, some six point million dollars to be taken out of the general funds to offset the cost of the twelve point eight million to remediate the property. If we get that EPA grant, that four million dollars goes back into our general fund, right? So it's not that, it's not that the grant is going to go away because we didn't specifically use that money for the twelve point eight.
Correct. And in fact, not only that, we are also very aggressively, and you'll see it on our council meeting on January fifteenth, we're also setting our legislative priorities. Again, we've been talking about EPA federal, we haven't even touched FDEP yet, the state granting system as well. So we're making that one of our number one priorities along with the police department. I think it's very important to note for the public that last year, we did a really great job with our lobbyists that we put in for a state appropriation for the command center EOC Police Department in excess of four million dollars. And we passed this House of Representatives committees, budget committees, and the Senate committee meetings. We didn't pass, you know, the governors, as we like to joke, the red pen, you know? But we were there, our project was there, and we're going to submit that again based on information we know from our lobbyists that we had, that we're very successful in funding police EOC command centers. Good examples are neighbors down to the south, Monroe County, just had the ribbon cutting for them, their command center that was funded through an estate appropriation. So we're going to aggressively, we have that one there, four point nine million. And you're right, Vice Mayor, the grants aren't guaranteed. That's why we want to make sure we put out as many feelers as possible and grant applications.
Yeah, so it is possible that we could return that six point some million dollars that we're taking out of the general fund, we could reimburse that with grants.
That would be our goal.
Perfect, okay.
Even with the one grant of four point nine million, and then perfect, and in a good role, if we receive that grant, our total cost for us out of pocket would be one point four million for mediation. If we receive any federal or state grants at all, then it's thank you from Governor and thank you Congress for getting this done. But, you know, again, these are hard decisions to make. You know, you never want to be the one to say, never spend the money, you got to spend the money the right way. So I do appreciate the council work on that and staff work on that. Councilman Duncan, you're recognized.
Thank you, just one extra comment. So we're using the six point five million ARPA grant. Ultimately, if we were offered six point five million grant with matching funds, everyone here would probably say, yes, we're getting six point five million free dollars. All we have to do is match it. So this is no different in this scenario. We're getting six point five million that we don't have to come up with. All we have to do is match with the ability to pay ourselves back in the future. So I think we need to consider that as well.
And we, not a great situation to be in, I'd rather we just not have to do this. But unfortunately, we have to make our environment safe and we have to do this. So we do appreciate the staff's and council's input on this.
Ralph, you have one? And Mayor, I'd like to add to, again, we're trying to be as transparent as we are, right? That's a track record. And I think something I want to put on the record is, Mayor, I know you touched over it really quickly regarding the history, the environmental history of this property. We had a great presentation as part of our EPA grant. It was literally, I think, Rod, I think it was like an hour and a half long by our environmental attorney, Michael Goldstein, which is part of the EPA grant, which was an hour and a half long that I'd like to create and put this on the link, at least on the record here for the town council and the residents at home. Because it is a great hour and a half historical perspective from day one, what happened to the property, to where we're at right now. And that literally recaps everything because that's part of the EPA grant of telling that story for community input as well. So Mayor, we'll create that link, you know, we'll work through the clerk's office. So that way, the folks that are watching at home, the folks that are here today, the presentation will be there. We'll have the agenda, you know, on the fifteenth. So I'm sure there's going to be some great conversation that we just, you know, put out there. Our communication manager does a great job, not only the folks that are viewing here tonight, but the next day, we usually get like three times more of the views for folks. And they're going to see this power presentation we put together. And we're certainly welcome and available to answer any questions. And we'll put that again on the January fifteenth meeting. So it's not like we're deferring months and months away, we're only deferring like a week and a half away from. So thank you, Mayor, just wanted to add that comment for, to take advantage of Michael Goldstein's historical perspective, which was an hour and a half long.
All right. Thank you, council. See you roughly in a week or so. This meeting is adjourned.